Good morning, everyone. I'd like to bring the meeting to order here today. Welcome to all that are here in attendance and those that are online. As always, we welcome your input and we'll have that session coming up shortly. You've all seen the agenda, council, so any additions to the agenda? Dale?
Yeah, I have one. I want to add and delete a couple people from the compassionate snowplow program.
Okay.
That could go under community services.
Krista? Okay. All right, Krista?
Just for clarification, are you wanting to talk about the compassionate program or you want to add and remove specific people?
And delete too.
So we don't need to do that by council resolution? We can just do that administratively?
Okay, thank you. All right. So we don't need it then? Or you wanted to discuss the policy too?
No, no.
Okay, so we don't need that on. Thank you. Good, thank you. Any further additions to the agenda? Krista, come on, I thought you did yours already.
I just see the public input session is not listed on the agenda, so we might want to add that so it's recorded.
That was what?
The public input session is not listed on the agenda.
Oh, hey, you know, I missed that. Okay, so that'll be after the minutes, right? I apologize for that, for all those listening in. It's supposed to be on there. So that'll be, we'll call it 4.2. All right, any further additions to the agenda? If not, I'll need a motion to accept the agenda? Yep, Barry? All in favor? Barry? All right, moving on then to the adoption of the minutes next, November 27th minutes. You've received them all. Any discussion on them? I had one question unless it's been changed. It's just a blah, 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 blah. There was a, oh, I think you changed it. There was, I think that council or something was in doubled. Did you catch that? Yeah, okay, good. That's all I had on it. All right, it's been changed, moved the minutes by Dale. All in favor? Carrie? All right, now we'll go into our public input session and we have one person lined up. So Nicholas Chuck, please come to the mic. Turn the, turn your mic on and everyone online can hear you as well. So it's three minutes and, yeah, bottom, yeah, it's red. Perfect, thank you. Welcome to county council, so.
Okay, good morning. My name is Nicholas Chuck and I live in Sanguto. I farm by Chair Hill. And for the past 10 years, I am volunteering as the president of Coyote Community Hall, just north of Chair Hill. So the reason I'm coming here today is because I want to explain really quickly in the last year what we've accomplished. And that is a $100,000 interior renovation. We've saved that hall from basically getting a match or getting it sold or getting it bulldozed into a building that is a venue now in Division Four that is up to date. New washrooms, new floors, new lighting, you name it. It has been fixed to something that is modern. And we've actually had our first wedding in 15 years there. So it's an option in Div Four, a hall that is not being sold or a legion that isn't being sold. So one of the things with these renovations is the hall is in three parts. Was built in 1966, addition in 1970, and another addition in the early 1980s. The original addition in the attic has no insulation. So now we are at the point in this hall where with the new vinyl flooring and all the upgrades, we have to keep minimum heat. For the last 40 years, they would just turn off Coyote Hall when there wasn't a dance. So we tried for a Fordus grant through Alberta Council, but there was way too many applications. So we're looking for additional funds. It'll be stated in, I believe, 9B, number three. I won't stay for that. But yeah, we're looking to see if we can get some blow-in insulation for the attic so that we are not heating Alberta with our propane bill per month and keep it as an act of community. Next month, I do have a visit with MLA Shane Getson. He recently contacted me through his office and he requested to come see this new refurbished hall here through the grapevine. So we're doing that. We have about four, five community events a year right now and it's growing. So I just want to see if they would look at our additional request for funding. Just, it's not the fun stuff, but it's just to keep it heated and saved.
All right, I believe your item's on the agenda afterwards, so we'll probably have a full discussion. Any questions?
I just wanted to be here for this first part.
Okay, go ahead.
Just curious, do you have an amount that you're requiring?
It's on the agenda, yeah, yeah.
And what is it?
Total would be 6,800. Sixty, yes, blanking on it right here, but it's 6,800 and.
How much?
And Krista?
6,829.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in and we appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Okay, no one else has indicated to join us, so we'll move on to item 5.1. And this, oh, that's 10 o'clock appointment, so we'll defer, we'll go past that one. So that's a virtual appointment at 10:00. So let's, let's move down to 6.1, operations. Krista, do you want to grab that?
So councillor Voltner received a request from a ratepayer in Division One looking to have council consider, or county, consider a reduction in speed immediately before, through, and after their hidden driveway. So I'll let councillor speak to it and then probably Greg Edwards can add on the public work side.
Okay, I've actually driven out to the location. Their driveway is in a dip on either side of a hill, so it's hidden both ways going down the road. They do have grandchildren that visit them quite often. They do have pets. It is a very hidden driveway and it could be a danger or a hazard. They have recorded people speeding quite heavily on that road. I know Greg, you did respond to them on the 24th. They appreciated that. What they're asking for is either hidden driveway signs and maybe a 30-kilometer reduction just to their driveways on either side. Or kids that play or some side of a sign saying there's a hidden driveway, kids playing, slow down kind of thing. The 50-kilometer-hour speed limit, they're very happy with on the main road, but they'd like some sort of reduction right before their driveway on either side.
Greg, do you want to comment, please?
Sure, no, absolutely. So this is, just to give some background history, this is a new development where the developer turned four, sorry, a one-quarter section into four 40-acre parcels. And then I believe he's planning to sell them off as acreages at that point. So he actually lives himself on one of those quartered areas. So in order to do his development, he had to extend our road right away because there was no road or not a road right away, but extend a road through our road right away into his development. So this is what used to be, this family used to be at the end of the road, so never had any traffic going by them. Now they're going to have some traffic going by them. So that is unfortunate, but it is a reality of living on a road allowance. When, when development happens, those things change. Due to the development being a very small, I'll say, capacity, like there's only four lots there. It's not like there's 40 lots. The roadway was not built to an eight-meter cross-section that would normally be required for high density. It was just a six-meter cross-section. So due to that, it was, the posted speed we had suggested was 50 kilometers an hour for that roadway. And we would change, there was no posted speed on the first quarter mile of that roadway. It was always just unposted. There was only two residences on it. For this development, I'm suggesting we take that entire roadway to 50 kilometers an hour because it is a narrow roadway from start to finish. It would just be safer. The driveway location being classified as hidden, yes and no. I do agree partially, but almost every driveway I think we have in this county, because it comes at us at a perpendicular direction, could be classified as hidden. The unique arrangement with this one is there's a rail track immediately north of this residence. And so it's actually an inclined crossing. The road comes up and inclines and there are stop signs at the rail line in order to cross because of that incline. So those stop signs are only about 110 meters past their residence. So I would doubt that anybody's really going beyond 50, whether you're coming towards it from this, from south to north. Or if you've come away from the sign going north to south, it's just, I don't think you can get that fast in 100 meters. But, so I would recommend we keep it at 50. I wouldn't recommend we take it to 30 just because of the stop sign location and everything. It's not really, I don't think we're really achieving anything there. And I would agree that we could put up a hidden driveway sign. We've done that in other locations. But to do a specific speed, we could be opening our door to many people going, hey, I want that same speed reduction at my driveway. And it could be very costly for no safety gain is what I'm concerned with. So part and parcel is the 50 I agree with. The sign of, you know, hidden intersection, we can certainly put that up to warn people. But there is also a responsibility of every ratepayer that, you know, their children and animals should not be in the road right away. They're designed for vehicles and those exchanges are never good when they happen.
So Greg, just a question. So this was built by the developer?
Correct.
And do we then take ownership of that road? Do we maintain that road?
We will maintain that road once the completion is done. And we just received completion here about a week and a half ago.
All right, so I just wasn't sure if we're responsible for everything. Just clarification.
Yeah, so it's built within our road right away and that's why we would take ownership of it.
Okay, Dale? No? Mike?
Morning Greg. On that development on the end of the road there, I know that area pretty good. Is, are those four lots designed for just personal, like farmyard usage or are they? Because right now, I farm right beside it. I've seen a lot of commercial equipment go up and down. And where that, we call it Range Road 20 South, hits 37 is down in that creek bottom. And pulling out with commercial equipment year-round is not a, is not great either. So I just wondered, like those permits or like that land, what it was subdivided for?
So it was subdivided for residential, so for country residential acreage development. It's sized enough that it's still classified as farm use, so it's, there's no commercial zoning there right now. There is activity because the developer is building a home and a shop, I believe, on the one place right now. So as far as our, I would have to get Tanya to speak more to it. But there would have to be some zoning changes for a commercial operation to go in there.
Okay, Mike?
So, so once that building is complete, then that commercial equipment shouldn't really be on that road anymore then? Is what you're saying?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, thank you. Further questions? Okay.
Yep. Greg, does the county put up the signs that I see in some places where they're, you know, slow children?
Yes, so a lot of those have been put up by us at different requests and different assessments for, for safety and whatnot. A lot of them get built around when there's a lot of bus traffic as well, right? So we want to make sure people are adhering to things and slowing down. As councillor Voltner had mentioned, it is in a hilly section, so the classification of hidden is there from a road profile, so to speak. But being that there's a stop sign 100 meters away, again, I, I think the warning sign would be the appropriate way to go with.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Barry, did you have more?
No, I agree with Greg's assessment on that. I mean, putting up some warning signs would be great and keep the speed at 50K. Does make sense. It is a valid point. We don't want every Tom, Dick and Harry want to keep the dust down in front of the driveway at 30K. So he does.
So you're suggesting?
Option two.
Option two.
50K sign with warning signs on the driveway?
Do you want to make that motion?
Yeah, I'd, yeah, I'd make that motion. Option two. Put warning signs and keep it at 50 kilometers an hour? Go ahead, Krista.
Uh, Krista?
Sorry, just option two also indicates that we'll report back to council. Are you wanting that as well? Or just do it and?
I would just, I would just do it, I think.
Okay.
Because you got a, option one is just the speed, option two is put the warning signs out.
Yeah, as I would, I would read option two is a lot more than what you were suggesting. You could make, make a motion that isn't one of the options. That's another option.
I'd make a motion that you move the road to 50 kilometers an hour and you put the, the warning signs prior to their driveway, either hidden driveway or something of that regards.
Okay. All right. Is that clear enough, Cindy?
There's no more options.
All right. So, so as I understand, the motion is that county council direct administration to set the speed limit at, or retain the speed limit at 50 kilometers an hour and, and post warning signs where appropriate? How's that? All right. Any further discussion? All in favor? Carrie? All right. Okay. Planning, planning and development, we've got about 15 minutes, so we should be able to get through everything, Tanya, right? Only one. All right.
Uh, four. No, you should be good. This is a development permit 25D 0220. The reason this is before a council is because it's a direct control district. So therefore it's at the direction of council. There's a few districts in the municipality that are special in nature. This is a special case in that it is adjacent, was a subdivision created in 2006 that was adjacent to the summer build of Sandy Beach landfill. The landfill was never reclaimed by Sandy Beach. It does not have a reclaimed certificate. So there's some tricky lots in that. They have to be developed. We don't want basements. You don't necessarily want pilings that they're going to disturb the land. So this development permit is for a manufactured home, a brand-new one. The landowner wants to put it on blocking so that there's less soil disturbance. There is some development already in that subdivision that is manufactured homes. So we have recommended approval, subject to standard conditions, 1 through 16. And so the only reason that really is here is because it's a direct control. Council must approve any residential structure within that subdivision. Mobile homes or manufactured homes are discretionary in nature. However, this is a brand-new 25, 20 by 64. So really, the only reason that it is considered a manufactured home is because of the length-to-width ratio. So under our definitions, length-to-width, 1 to 3. So if it is three times longer than it is wide, therefore it is deemed a manufactured home. If it was shorter, it would be considered a modular home. Mobile homes and modular homes have to adhere to the architectural controls. So one of the issues that we have with the bylaw is that it must include a basement or foundation that are not piles. Well, in this case, we prefer that the development actually does not have a basement. We would prefer that it is actually on the blockings. So it's not piles and it's not a basement. The eaves has 16-inch and that it has a soffit to incorporate decorative trim, faux-end and brackets. So the developer submits a building permit that shows how it is going to look. So it meets those architectural controls. There are three existing manufactured homes already in Bella Vista on the west side of the subdivision. And then there is also two modulators, two homes that are 12, under 1,200, and two homes that are at 1,500, and two vacant sites. So we recommended approval, subject to standard conditions.
Okay, thank you very much, Tanya. Jill?
Yeah, I'll motion to approve the.
Okay. Which option is that, Krista? Can I not add it? Option one?
Yeah.
To approve the development?
Yeah.
Any discussion?
Yep.
Yes, Dale?
So that little red spot in the corner close to the lake, is that where the landfill was?
Yes, the very south boundary.
And the particular one we're dealing with is where the arrow is on the.
Um, there should be an X. Lot 17 is the X.
Yep.
And then the, if you can scroll a little bit just to the box, so you can see, keep going. Yeah, see that little parcel that's labeled as southeast? That's where the landfill was.
There. Thank you. Okay. All right. Any further questions? If not, oh, Mike?
And that's why, that's why you allow these mobile homes and modular homes in that end of, of the Bella Vista?
In that.
Because I know some people that live further to Range Road 13, they got somebody pretty fancy houses in there. They're not super happy with this, right?
So the one thing that was, there was a misconception in the naming of the convention. The developer names the subdivision when they create it. Now, because they labeled it Estates, that was the old 2002 bylaw, yes, 2002 bylaw. And then when we did the re-bylaw in 2014, we created this district called Country Residential Estates. So people just assumed that if it had the name Estates, that it automatically was zoned in Country Residential Estates, which was the higher-end subdivisions. It was a misnomer. The developer named it Estates, not that it had that district.
My, my tax bill would beg to differ on that. Just putting that out there, so.
Okay.
It is.
Okay. Any further discussion? No?
One more. Could we, sorry, just, I know you're in a hurry. It's, could we make it so that they have to have like a, like a two-car garage on it as well? So it's not just a modular house, you know, to try to appease the first half of the subdivision, I guess?
You could, because it is direct control, you could direct administration to review and do a survey out to the landowners in that specific subdivision. If they would be interested as making it mandatory, you can then amend the land use bylaw for that district with a public hearing. Because it would only affect that subdivision as direct control. But in its current state, no.
All right. Further discussion?
No, I didn't.
Okay. Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion? Opposed? When opposed, motion's carried. All right, so, what's that? Oh, Krista?
Always. Um, just because I know that Tanya and her team are compiling a list of issues and concerns regarding the land use bylaw, do you want that added as a consideration when we are reviewing it?
Yes, yes, please, yeah.
Good idea. Yeah, excellent. All right, thank you. So let's move on to corporate services. Public land are not sold. A1. Five minutes. Can you do it in six minutes?
For the public auction.
Yeah, okay.
Good morning, councillors. So I'm here today to discuss what next steps are for the properties that were offered at the public auction held on the last Friday of November. There were three properties in question that were not sold at the auction. All of three properties are within the hamlet of Sanguto and at this point in time, I am recommending to council that they go ahead with the next step, which would be for us to apply and have titles transferred into our name so that we could offer these properties up for sale through a real estate agent.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Motion?
I'd make that motion that we take the next step and move forward. I don't see an option anywhere, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's option two, to take.
Option two, yeah. It's up here now?
Yeah. Yeah, option two? Yeah. Moved by Dale. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Carried unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, well, let's, how about the next one? That might take longer or not.
So the next one is a request for cancellation of penalties. This one is, again, a property that is zoned industrial and at this point in time is still industrial. So he's made a request. I'm not sure if everyone's had a chance to review the information. In this case, he's asking for two things. He's asking for a reassessment and he's asking for a reduction in the penalties. The total reduction that he's asking for is $7,529.33. So as for this, the assessment is not something council has authority in, but they certainly have the authority to reduce the taxes that apply to this property. The gentleman in question has apparently been suffering some health issues when he's got it and that's why it's kind of been in limbo. He's also quite upset that he's lost a lot of property off of that particular, particular property out in the middle of nowhere, so.
Mike?
Has he tried to zone it back to just, because it wasn't agricultural before and then he's owned it as industrial-agricultural? Is that what he did?
He purchased it as industrial or as, yes, as industrial. It used to be a, an oilfield location, oilfield site.
So it's always been industrial?
It's been industrial.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the options are to suggest he brings it back to agriculture? Is that even an option, a possibility?
He could certainly reply to, apply to have it rezoned to agriculture if that's something that he wants. From talking to him, it didn't sound like that was what was happening there. One of the other options in which I've moved it to for now is we have a assessment and tax class called vacant commercial.
Yeah.
That vacant commercial rate is very similar to the improved residential rate. It's important to note on the vacant commercial, vacant commercial industrial rate. It doesn't mean that the property is bare. It doesn't mean that it's bare land. It was, when we, when we brought this in, the intention was to deal with properties. For example, Sanguto, if you go down Main Street, there's multiple commercial buildings there that have nothing going on. So we didn't want them to be taxed at the full business rate. This is why we brought in the commercial rate. It's very close to the current residential rate. In fact, I believe the municipal rate is the same for both. The difference between them is because it's commercial, it's being charged the commercial school tax, not the residential school tax. So for this particular property going forward, I will keep an eye on it. If it continues to be, look like it's vacant, then we can leave it at that vacant rate and which would be quite a substantial savings. But that would only apply going forward for 2026 taxes and going forward. That doesn't address his concerns here today.
Yeah. Well, yeah, go ahead, Dale.
So is that the $7,000 representative of three years?
There's penalties in there as well. He purchased the property in, sorry, I have it here. He purchased the property in June of '23, so for that year, the taxes would have been taken care of in the sale. Then he was looking at 24 taxes, 25 taxes. And because it's an industrial property, it's a higher rate.
Yep, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Well, it seems to me we can't do very much about the, the past taxes. And, you know, if you can look at that to, to put it under that vacant industrial, that makes sense to me.
Yes, absolutely. I've, I've looked at it once this year and we'll just make it on a regular drive-by to make sure that it's still vacant.
Yeah.
And we'll leave it at that.
Okay, so is someone prepared to make a motion? What do we have here? So I would say option one, if someone wants to make that motion.
Why are we refunding the taxes? He's, he's already said in his letter, he's going to leave, sell the property and leave the county as fast as he can.
Oh, not amend the assessment? Oh, not amend the assessment, sorry. So which option then?
I'm recommending option one, deny the request to amend assessment.
Oh, to deny to amend, yeah.
To deny.
Yeah, right.
Sorry, I.
Yeah, yeah, so, someone's prepared to make that motion? Or something else?
No, that motion makes sense.
Barry will make, uh, motion option one. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion's carried unanimously. Can we leave the other one, uh, Rob? We've got an appointment for.
I recommend that we wait until it's speaking to the same, so if we would like to let, uh, the property owner speak before I, uh, talk, it's up to you, we could review it now, but it's the same issue.
Oh, it's, uh, the same as the one that's speaking now?
Yes, that's right. He's, he's going to speak.
Oh, God, we want to speak first then.
Yes, I would recommend that he speaks first.
Yeah, okay, so we'll go back, uh, is the, uh, uh, person online? Seth, uh, Belair on the line, so, uh, we'll move back to item five point one, and, uh, Seth, can you hear me? Are you online?
Uh, yes, I am. I'm just figuring this out on, not to push the wrong buttons. Um. What's, can you hear me? Hello? Can I do?
You just, you just about killed Mark, just so you know.
Hello, I'm here, can anybody hear me?
Oh, yeah, we can. You're, you're just about blew the roof off here.
Okay.
Well, welcome to our council meeting, and, uh, if we can turn the volume down just slightly, uh, and you can hear me well, Seth?
Yes, I can. Is that better?
Yeah, that's good. All right, so, uh, uh, the floor is yours, uh, for this item.
So, uh, this is just regarding my, uh, last year's taxes and the penalties that were accrued. Um, I did make payments on June thirtieth uh, on the deadline, and I afterwards have received a letter about the penalties for the interest and went back and looked into it. And it wasn't, uh, displayed from my bank account until July first, and then, being a holiday, I'm assuming wasn't deposited until X, San Ant County till July second, so I'm just asking for, to see if those could be revoked.
Okay, just a question, uh, uh, if you did it on, uh, on June thirtieth, how come your bank statement doesn't show it?
I don't know. And that's why I did a bunch of payments that day, and they were all within a minute of each other, and every one of them is not posted till the following day at that time. So I'm not sure why it was a twenty-four hour delay on that instance.
I, I'm just guessing, it might have been because you did it after, after hours, and then it goes to the next day. Like, if you did it at ten o'clock at night, for example, it'll probably show up as the next day, and that's the normal procedure, I think.
Okay, cause in the past, it's always done it straight away, so I'm not sure why that day, and there was just kind of a confusion on my part or on their part, or just being a holiday a couple days.
All right, any questions, uh, true to? No? Well, uh, yeah, I, we'll discuss that then, and, uh, uh, thank you, uh, for that. And we'll, we'll make a decision shortly here on it.
Okay, so then, so then, um, will I be notified? I just wanna make sure that if there, if it is gonna stick, then I have it cleaned up before the end of December.
Yeah, we'll, we'll notify you, uh, uh, right after this meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you for, thank you for reviewing it.
Yeah, okay, thank you very much. Oh, one question now, hang on.
Yes.
Oh, not for him. Okay, thank, thank. What's that? Yeah, okay, we have confusion here. Okay, thank you very much, uh, so we'll move on.
I got a comment on this.
Okay.
This, this is another instance of a late tax, and we still need to get back to Ryan Roth, I believe, and we were supposed to discuss this issue of being later at some other meeting as well.
Well, I, I think we have this one now.
Yes.
Yeah, this one is now, so, uh, uh, maybe we'll move to seven A three, and Rob, if you would, uh, that's the same one, right? That's the one we're dealing with just now.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Excuse me, Jurgen, can we just get a motion to accept Sess' presentation for information?
Oh, of course.
Thank you.
Would someone make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Dale, all in favor? Carry.
So, uh, this is, of course, is in relation to, uh, Mr. Blair's, uh, presentation, and, uh, the county is recommending, of course, that we deny this request is our, our position on this. The only information we have is that the payment was made July first, which is after the date. Uh, for the options that we have here, we have, of course, the, uh, the option one is to deny, option two to approve. Option three, uh, is to basically defer so that we can discuss about the, uh, penalty bylaw if you so desire, and then that would be, I believe it was Mr. Roth, the, uh, councillor Kinish, had indicated. They're similar situations, so that's where we're at with that.
Okay, thank you. Well.
I make motion for option.
Oh, Mike.
Make motion for option three.
Uh, option, option three should be to defer the decision regarding the cancellation until such time.
Yes, until we can review it, same as Ryan Roth's.
Yes.
Yeah, but here's the problem with that, if it's not done before the end of December, it tax on penalties.
Yeah, I would suggest they be contacted and tell them to pay their account, so there is no incurred penalties.
Trista?
We would have the option after the review if we were to cancel, um, to cancel those additional penalties applied after January one.
Yeah, the, the only problem is if we choose, uh, not to cancel, then he'd, oh, you, you could still cancel the, uh, the second one. Oh, all right, okay, that's, uh, that's good, yeah. All right, so, uh, uh, I guess we'll, uh, uh, make a motion to, or motion has been made to defer, uh, this, uh, any discussion on that? That was option three, uh, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried unanimously. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, councilors.
Yeah, so if, uh, if you can notify, uh, uh, Mr. Belair, then that, uh, we, we are looking at the policy, so we didn't make a decision today, and, and maybe indicate to him if, uh, you know, the best thing is, is he pays it, and if we choose to, uh, reimburse him, then that'll come off his next year's bill, or however that happens. Yeah. Or, or if, uh, if there's a penalty, if he doesn't pay, if there's a penalty and we change our policy, then, uh, he wouldn't pay, but the thing is, if we don't change our policy, uh, well, no, uh, either way it would work, yeah.
Yeah, so we could either, he, they could either pay.
Yeah.
And not get a penalty.
Yes.
Or if council decides to change the bylaw.
Yeah.
Then we would refund the second one and potentially the.
Yeah, put that into his email, that that's clear. Okay, thank you very much. All right, moving to finance, uh, uh, B one, interim operating budget.
Yes, good morning, uh, county council. I'm here to bring forth, um, approval to accept our two thousand twenty-six, twenty-six interim operating budget. At this point in time, the county is not in position to approve our full operating budget for the twenty twenty-six year, because we have to go through the budget process, review, all that thing. In order to manage and in order to pay bills effective January first, we need to adopt an interim operating budget. This operating budget consists of things like utilities, all sorts of things like that, that we need to survive. Um, extra things like projects, special requests are not allowed under this, so it would not be that, it would just be things like like operations, typical operations. So I'm asking county council to approve that, uh, we accept the interim operating budget until such time that our twenty twenty-six operating budget is adopted by council.
Okay, thank you very much, Carla. Discussion?
I would like to add that we do a, a wage freeze and a hiring freeze, except the CEO position, until we do have a budget in place?
Yes, that, that would, that wouldn't be, uh, that'd be a part of the operating budget.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
We don't do anything like that without council's approval, so it stays the same.
Trista, did you have something? No. Yeah, Dale?
So, and I would like to add to that, too. No major capital purchases, cause we really, at this point, this council um, has not dealt with much of the budget. And I'm a little uneasy about approving fifty percent of what we had in twenty twenty-five.
Well, I think I understand that that is not allowed, right?
Yeah, it's just, you know, operating funds, any special projects, anything like that will be
Yeah.
froze until such time.
That's why I wanna be clear on that.
This is just so we can basically operate as a municipality effective January first, so we can pay bills.
So it's, it's only operating, uh, expenditures, not, not any capital expenditures.
And those operating expenditures, as an example, would be?
Um, are utility bills, um, salaries, uh, bone, yeah, sand, salt, that type of thing.
Repairs, thank you. Yeah.
So.
Trista?
I was just gonna clarify that if administration has any special projects or capital projects that need to proceed or that are requested to proceed prior to the final approval of the budgets, then that would come in as an individual item to council for consideration.
Yeah. Yeah, that's where we've always dealt with that in the past. If anything comes through that needs to happen before the adoption of the twenty-six budget, it has to come to council for approval.
Right. Good. What's that? Yeah, well, it, it's just, it's just a discussion of, of whether we should change the process of, of when this is done. I think that's all in our, uh, in future discussions. We can't change it for now. I think for next year, we have to, uh, make sure that this, uh, budget discussion happens much earlier, but of course, in an election year, it's a little bit difficult.
No, absolutely. I think that, that we kind of talked about at the last meeting, too, is to.
So I, I think that, that is a further discussion that, uh, we're going to have to have, that we're not, we'd rather not be caught in this where we, we don't know what the budget is for next year, so we'd, uh.
The second thing is we have no, no input in the budget at all, this council, right? So that's why I'm concerned, right? Previous council set this budget, and we're just not exactly certain that we trust that answer.
Yeah, I, I think that's very true, but, uh, uh, any budgets, we will have input. Yeah, yeah. Trista?
That's exactly what I was gonna say, so the actual final operating budget, you will have full input into.
I, I think that's critical. At any time.
Yeah.
Only we'll, you know, without an election next, uh, fall, we'll be able to do this, uh, you know, probably starting in August or September. My guess, I don't know what the timing is. All right, Bo, did you have some?
Nope.
No? Anyone else? No? Okay, so, uh, uh, we need a motion. You'll make the motion?
Oh, I'll provide that motion for number one, that the county adopts the two, two thousand twenty-six interim operating budget based on approved fifty percent of the prior year. And so on, on.
Okay, so option one. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? That motion's carried unanimously. Thank you very much, Carla.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, page two. Page forty-three, oh, no, no. Page two, so, uh, we're looking at, uh, five, uh, no, seven, seven B two. The variance report.
Yep, so I have before you the capital variance report as of October thirty-first. So, I've gone through, um, did a bit of review, there's nothing really to, um, everything seems to be in line with budget. Um, you can refer, the first couple pages here just kind of explain, go through things at length, uh, or a little bit more detail of each thing and where, where their sta, where their statuses are and what amounts we've spent in there. Um, there were some final costs still gonna be coming through in November and stuff, which I'll have for council, probably at the next meeting. So I just wanted to actually move forward to page two, just to kind of get into the nuts and bolts of this. Um, kind of review of corporate services. In the twenty twenty-five capital budget, there was a budget for the replacements of signs um, in the municipality, entrance signs, that sort of thing. Um, that ended up being canceled by county council in mid-year. And, and it was supposed to be funded by the local government fiscal framework, and so it was canceled and it made a little bit more room for that grant. I mean, obviously, if council wanted to proceed with some more science in the future year, we can definitely do that and bring that back to council at that time. Uh, operation services, our approved twenty twenty-five capital budget was six point four million dollars in operation services throughout the twenty twenty-five year. The council approved a two point three million dollars in capital additions. The bulk of that capital addition would be Township Pro five forty, and the reason being for that is we were, received a grant in mid-year, and that total project was one point eight million dollars, so seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of that was grant. We funded six hundred thousand dollars from the LGFF grant, and we entered into some debt of three hundred and some thousand dollars. We had some other budget cancellations in here, uh, one was the, by council motion, was the Wash Shelter Bay down our municipal shop. And also, there was an administration cancellation of a, um, Public Works forty-five hundred crew cap, which at the time, when it was in the budget, we had that, uh, tragic fire down our coal storage facility. We ended up, was able to, one of the trucks was replaced, was able to, we were working out, and we didn't need to purchase this truck. So my administration canceled that. Um, so, I've gone through just kind of what completed projects are, we know of, of in the year. Um, so we have four projects in there. We did the twenty twenty-five annual greater purchase, which we, is in there. We had some other things in there. Uh, we had, uh, we were projecting, uh, five, four more projects to be fully complete by the end of twenty twenty-five. Um, in progress and carry forward in twenty twenty-six, number one is the coal storage fire replacement project. This included several items like our snowplow trucks and our gravel trucks, and of course, the building. We have purchased all the vehicles and equipment that we have. Of course, the one thing outstanding right now is the completion of the coal storage fire. So that would be the one reason why this would carry over to twenty twenty-six. I don't know if that will be fully completed by the end of twenty-five. Okay? And then we have some engineering and stuff for Range Road thirty-three, just to prepare, just to see what those costs are and to go through, and engineering on five forty, some preliminary. So that's in the budget as well, too. It forms a part, whether council goes ahead with that project or not, it still forms a part of that capital project. Should council ever decide to move forward with it. Any questions?
All right, questions?
Um, on the page where it says you've got, uh, in progress a fire engine type one for one point one million. And you've also got another type three in progress for seven hundred and forty thousand, I believe? Is that what I'm seeing?
Yeah, we're gonna get to that next little page, so that's, that's to do with the, uh, yeah, that's on the very next page, we're gonna go community.
Oh, they jump ahead here?
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay. All right.
So our next spot is, is, uh, community engagement services, approved twenty twenty-five approved capital budget is two point seven million dollars. We have some budget additions of ninety-three thousand dollars. That consisted of the purchase of the West, uh, West End, um, bus, which is, it's, it's reserves that we had, it's a West End Bus Committee. We had the money available, it just came up throughout the year that it was available to purchase, so a purchase, there was no tax implications on that at all. Uh, the other budget cancellations, also, there was a ten thousand dollar increase to the Meritarp ERC pad as well, too. And that was a split between county funding and the town of Meritarp, so it cost county five thousand dollars from your reserves to increase that. We also had budget cancellations in here, too. Um, which is, we had a budget item in there for the fire fighting training prop. So the grant was not approved for that, so we canceled that project, and going forward. And going forward, um, something we'll make sure it does not actually hit the capital budget until we actually have a ground approval. So this is something we'll watch for in the future. So we have some completed projects in here. We, the Merythorpe ERC pad will be completed. We have some other items there, some UTV side-by-side, a drone, jaws of life. We have projected completion by the end twenty-five. We had some, purchased some exhaust covers in the East End and our backup generators were, should be increased, completed by the end of twenty-five. In progress, we have, uh, fire engine type three, station four is in progress. That's the one for the seven hundred and forty, I think, thousand dollars. We have a crew cup, crew cup, crew truck, also in progress. And then we have a type one engine at the station. So the type one engine, I know for a fact, will be two years coming, so that one is in the process. So those are other aims as well. Do you have any more questions about that one?
Okay. Any questions there? Dale?
So with respect to carry forward to twenty twenty-six, um, the fire engine type one E station. Um, so that money is in the twenty twenty-five budget, we'll move forward.
Yeah, it's sitting, it's planned purchase is gonna be sitting as progress because we actually won't physically receive it until twenty twenty, probably twenty twenty-seven is when we'll receive it.
Thank you.
We've already purchased it, or we
Yes.
ordered it?
We've ordered it, purchased it, we're doing, we're doing a performance bond on it to to save it. We we actually end up saving about fifty thousand dollars by doing that on the purchase of the truck.
So we can't cancel it?
So that's a we could fight a little more. I can't answer that question right now, but I could investigate.
I'd like to look further into that, because I have looked into these, these engines already and we can save a ton of money going another route.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay.
Would that be just for the virtual engine one and?
The type three and the type one.
Type three.
So what's the penalty if we were to, uh, council?
We will look at that and bring that back to council for a decision.
Yeah, I don't think there'd be much of a penalty, honestly.
Well, if we've paid fifty already, that'd be lost.
Oh, I can save.
We'll find out. Yeah.
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 Let me investigate.
Let's investigate that, because that's.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, take a look at that.
Hey.
What what's the projected delivery date for them?
For me?
What's a projected del- delivery date for those?
Twenty twenty
What's that?
Twenty twenty-seven.
Twenty twenty-seven?
Yeah.
One of them was like twenty-two months and one was like thirteen months or so.
Okay. Trista?
I was just gonna answer that question.
Okay, alright, good.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, get back to us then, that's, uh, fine.
Well, absolutely.
Yeah. Alright, continue on.
Okay, the next one, infrastructure services. This is basically all all bridges in our twenty twenty-five capital approved budget, bridges at three point five million dollars. Uh, completed projects, um, was the Rockshut Bridge culvert replacement. That was actually kind of a emergency project that happened throughout the year. We had to do repairs on it. Actually, I think the motion was for a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars that here at yours. And it came in quite a bit under, so it's complete, so that's good. Uh, uh, we have other bridges that are projected to be completed by the end of twenty twenty-five, and then we have some carrier projects as well, too. Um, they're gonna be moving forward into twenty twenty-six, so. Yeah.
So those, uh, projected to complete by the end of twenty twenty-five were just about there, so are they done?
They're there.
They're done?
Yeah, they were just about there, so.
Yeah.
Brian might be able to answer a little bit more detail on that.
Okay.
Yeah, so Mr. Reeve, uh, zero eight seven seven five seven one seven five eight and one three four six nine are all complete. This is an October thirty-first summary, that's all, and the, uh, FECs have been completed, and those three will be coming off the books this year.
Yeah, we might have, there's just some financials in here, and that's why finance has to report this, because there could be some, uh, uh, the post-engineering to coming in on that sort of final bill, so.
Alright.
But once that comes in, then finance can move that to a completed status.
Okay. And then those in in progress, that bridge collapse, that's that's the one that we've been dealing with forever?
Yes.
Yeah, and and that is actually planned to be done next year?
No, it's still in litigation at this time. It just kept in the books in terms of if it moves forward, we have the money allocated.
Alright. Okay. Alright, any questions? Dale?
So I'm not sure if we can talk about that particular bridge, but you said it were in litigation?
Um.
Yeah, Trista?
We can talk about it in closed session, but not.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to talk about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't get a full report on that yet. Yeah. Yeah. Okay, uh, alright.
Okay.
Uh, continue on then?
Alright, the final page of this variance report is just kind of showing county council on the funding. So on, you can see the approved budget on there. We were at twenty twenty-five approved capital budget was twelve million eight hundred fifty-one thousand and two hundred and thirty-six dollars. Throughout the twenty twenty-five year, there was approval for additional, little over additional two million dollars in funding. So that's just showing what in the middle part budget amendments, that kind of shows the additions by council motion and how it would affect each of our funding sources by reserves, contributions, debts, grants, that sort of thing. And then I just at the end, it's just the updated budget. It's the fourteen point eight million dollars is where we end up landing with the two thousand twenty-five approved and the amendments throughout the year.
Alright.
Okay.
Any questions on that? Yep. Dale?
So the budget amendments, say for the very first one, at five hundred and forty-eight thousand, that's a explanation on that one?
Yeah, so right below that, so the five hundred and forty-eight thousand, that will tail the Range Road thirty-three, the Township Road five forty, the additional five thousand dollars for the Merythorpe ERC pad, and then West End Transit Bus came from reserves. So that's what compiles, makes up that five hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep. Yep. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, continue.
I think that's it. I do have one more thing I'd like to mention. And this is council, but I would like to actually introduce you to our new finance manager, Terry Lee Chen. This is county council. Started Monday and a welcoming, he's gonna be a great asset to the county. He's got some really great ideas and really, really good, so.
Oh, thank you. Welcome to the team and good to meet you.
Okay. So that basically concludes my capital variance report for county council, and I'm just looking for a motion to accept for information. And we'll hear any more questions.
So we're looking for motion to accept for information? Jill? Discussion? All in favor? Carried unanimously, thank you. Alright, egg services. Appointment of, uh, is are you doing that? Okay. Trista?
I lost my agenda somehow. Um, so Erin is away today, so I will take care of this one. So the first, uh, item is for the chairperson for the agricultural services board. At the organizational meeting, we delayed appointing anybody looking for a recommendation from that board. Uh, so the board did meet and came back with a recommendation of Ed Gifford as the chairperson. Um, council is required to appoint per the bylaw, so it's here for your approval or your appointment.
Alright, any questions? Motion? Option one? Option one moved by Dale? Discussion? All those in favor? Carried? Right?
Uh, similarly, the county, um, deferred an appointment for the vice chair for the agricultural services board. That again happened at the egg services meeting. Um, and they recommended the appointment of councillor Jill Stony as the vice chair, and so it is here for your approval.
Okay. Discussion? Any, uh, uh, a motion on that, please? Okay, Mike? That is to approve option one? Okay. All in favor? Carried unanimously? Thank you. Alright. Uh, fire services invoice appeal. So is that Chief Schroeder, Dave?
Sure, you can. You can stick to it if you want, whatever you want to do.
Good morning, council. Sorry if my voice is a little bit scratchy, just getting over from the flu. Um, before you today, uh, we had a rate pair who has filed an appeal for fire services, uh, invoice, uh, from, uh, uh, stemming from a structured wildland fire on May the third, uh, this past year, uh, in the amount of twenty-nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Uh, the grounds of the appeal, um, are based, uh, as as filed are based on, uh, that, uh, the fire was not caused, uh, by them. They had no idea that their actions would result in a fire. Um, they offered what the cause of the fire was. Um, and, uh, that, uh, the basically the amount is a huge bill and is entirely unexpected for them. Um, this rate pair initially, uh, engaged former council, uh, councillor Lovich, who approached me with respect to what possible options were. Um, at that point, uh, councillor Lovich had indicated that that rate pair at that time had no, uh, was not disputing the bill other than how big it was, was looking for a payment plan, so initially deferred to finance because they do offer payment plans for these situations. Um, later, uh, the rate pair, uh, elected to file the appeal before you today as per our bylaw. Um, what I did at that point was engage, uh, in an administrative review to make sure that the charges, uh, that were issued uh, for the fire, uh, were in accordance to our bylaw and our council approved policy with respect to cost recovery. Um, and, uh, was level of service, uh, required, appropriate for for the response that day. I found in conclusion that all charges were appropriate, that, uh, uh, the appropriate measures and the appropriate response, uh, was given for a situation. It was a structural fire involving, uh, what ended up being a powered and gas-fired chicken coop. Uh, the rate pair, uh, took all reasonable measures to, you know, save, save his stock, uh, first and foremost, and and assist fire services where where that was. Um, in summary, um, three stations responded, uh, to the fire, uh, with respect to, um, the requirements, uh, for, uh, to to suppress the fire and extinguish the fire. Two of the stations were charged in accordance to policy. Uh, the total amount of cost, uh, to the county rate pair exceeded, uh, three thousand, uh, seven hundred dollars. And in accordance to our policy, we billed twenty-nine hundred of that. So in accordance to policy and bylaw, the recommendation of before you today, from an administrative standpoint of view, is to deny the appeal. Uh, just based on the fact that, uh, everything was done appropriately administratively wise. But council does have options, uh, to, uh, look at the bill and look at, uh, uh, anything from denying, uh, to, uh, uh, you know, looking at, uh, uh, another alternative or, uh, upholding the appeal. So that's before you today. I can answer any questions for you.
Thank you very much, Chief. Bo?
Uh, just a question on the reduction. Uh, how is that based and what's it based on?
Your your consideration to reduce?
No, the reduction from three thousand down to two thousand.
It's based on policy. So policy restricts, under our cost recovery policy, we, uh, at all times only charge our rate pairs for two responding stations. So the immediate station and then the, and and then an adjoining station. If it takes more than that, uh, in accordance to policy, we don't, we don't cover, or we don't charge those costs, except in the case of negligence. So if there's an obvious, a neg- a negligence is an example of, uh, you know, uh, knowingly causing a fire, uh, during a fire advisory or fire ban, in that case, we would levy all charges against them.
So and our our policy is that regardless of how the fire starts, we bill the rate pair.
That's correct. Uh, so a policy basically says, uh, under five, uh, five, it basically says, where fire services has taken any action whatsoever for extinguishing a fire or responding to an emergency on private land within the county for the purpose of preserving life or property from injury or destruction by fire or other factory, cost recovery for the emergency response may be made as follows. And under A, for any structure, vehicle, or equipment fire on private land, the full cost of the response is made by the first responding fire station up to and including the second nearest responding fire station shall only be invoiced. Any response assistance caused by additional fire stations other than the first two nearest responding stations shall not be invoiced unless deemed appropriate by the county fire chief. And then moves into clause B, which is where if there was negligence involved or some other factor that, uh, uh, exceeded our our regular ability.
So, uh, just, uh, uh, this case doesn't fit into there, but if, uh, if, let's say, this fire would have gone across the road and burned down the neighbor's, uh, place, uh, does the neighbor pay for his fire?
No, not ne- not typically. We would, we, if we know there's a clear origin, it all goes back to the or origin.
Back to the.
Yeah. Where where origin can't be determined, then we will typically invoice for the cost because it's where insurance companies, these are typically insurable fires. And so where an insurance policy would look at, you've had a fire on your property, whatsoever the cause will cover that and they would subrogate to the other party. The county is often plays, okay, here's the, here's your bill for that, give it to your insurance company, and then the insurance company would subrogate to whatever party that they felt would be appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Further questions? Do we have a motion?
I'd motion for option one. Insurance should be helping him cover it anyhow. Offer him a payment plan if you want, but I think option one.
Okay. That's denying the appeal. Uh, discussion? All in favor? Motion's carried unanimously. Thank you, council. Okay.
Have a good day.
Uh, thank you, chief. Alright, uh, B, community services, nine B. Uh, so the funding agreement, uh, FCSS, so who do we have here? Oh, just in time. You're on the hot seat. Yeah.
So if council has not met Donna Kerr, this is Donna Kerr, our community services manager.
Thanks for coming so timely. I like that.
Good morning, everyone. Sorry, I just got to get myself organized. So presented before you today is the twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-eight funding agreement for our funding from the province for our family and community support services. It is, uh, I won't read you everything that's there. You guys, I'm sure have read that, but, um, we use this funding to support many initiatives. Um, our play school program, our out-of-school care program, we used it for our summer programs. Um, our home support program, interagency, um, some external grants to our libraries and our seniors' clubs. And basically, they give us three hundred um, three hundred thousand dollars and we put in seventy-five annually, sorry.
Anything else? No? Questions? Trista?
I was just going to add that it is a required twenty percent match for the county or for the municipality, um, so it's an eighty-twenty split with the province.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? So what we're looking at here is, uh, just, uh, we have to endorse the agreement. And, uh, that is basically, uh,
And Trista is.
You have the money to to deal.
Absolutely, yeah, and Trista has the authority, um, within the system to to, um, endorse the document.
Alright, if there's no discussion, uh, I'll accept a motion.
Um, I do have a question.
I have a question, too.
Okay, question then.
Well, I'm not sure whether I can actually ask it. Just for the fact that I know that there has been a a rate payer that's asked about some particular things that is involving a daycare, and I have involvement with the daycare, so I'm not sure whether I should
Oh.
remove myself from this particular portion.
I I would think that you're far enough away at this point. We're not talking specific programs. We're just talking the funding agreement in general.
Yes. Yes, and not the budget for how we're going to spend it, but just to get the dollars in.
Yeah, I would say if if the daycare is coming to ask for money, that would be fine. But this is, everyone has equal access to it. So thank you. Yeah, thank you, Trista. Yep.
Who watches how the money is spent? Where's the accountability for each thing that getting what amount of money?
So there is a budget annually and then there is a annual report that has to be submitted to the province and it does get.
So the full accountability.
By our county auditor as well. It has to be audited before it goes.
Okay.
Trista?
There are fairly specific initiatives or projects that can be funded. The province is very clear on their mandate. So but it does come back to council through the budget process.
Did Jill? Jill?
I was just gonna motion option one.
Option one. Okay. Any further discussion? You have?
So with respect to the budgeting and that, so is that available? Like, we're asking, we're providing $300,000 of the funding. So is there some kind of budget process that you bring forward?
It's part of the operating budget of the county. It comes through with everything else. Yeah.
Okay, so there's a line somewhere for your budget and there's a line where you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so just like I have many subfunctions under community services.
That's all I want to know. Thank you.
Good. Okay, further questions or discussion? If not, the motion's been made. Option one. We approve this. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, Donna, are you doing the next one?
I am so.
Okay, so that's nine B three Coyote Community Hall. We have.
We have the library board appointment first.
Oh, I checked it off. Okay, let's do the library. Let's do the library for first.
So before you today, I have an appointment for our Laxan County Library Board. It's the member that represents the Darwell End area. The recommendation from the library board is that council approve Ms. Jocelyn April as the member for that position. Our previous member was Marilyn Fernley. She resigned in February of this year and the position has sat vacant in that timeframe.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone want to make a motion there?
Yeah, motion one to approve.
Okay, Jill makes motion option one. Discussion. All those in favor? Barry?
Wonderful. Thank you.
All right, now I can check it off again. All right, so B three Coyote Community Hall. Oh, that's Trista.
So you heard from Mr. Listachuk this morning. They are looking for some funding for the insulation project at the Coyote Hall. The amount is in front of you, 6881. Sorry. Council had a previous council had already funded the window installation project as he indicated. So that was 6,208.05. They had initially intended on getting a grant for the insulation project that fell through as Mr. Listachuk explained. And so they are looking for this funding from the county. As he explained as well, they're well into $100,000 on this renovation project. They did indicate that the volunteers themselves have committed over six, I think it was $6,000 of personal funds to the project. And so they are hoping just to to proceed. As I was talking with Mr. Listachuk about the request, they actually had a break in as well, which puts them a little bit further behind. They broke one of the windows they were going to replace anyway, but and broke the frames in the doors and and got into the building and stole the toilet paper, every roll they had.
Okay.
There is funding in the 2025, I'm just pulling it up here, 2025 Recreation Facility and Program Assistance Grant. We have a substantial amount still left to fund out of that program, about $60,000. The bylaw to collect this, and there's still some ins and outs that need to go into this, but the bylaw that collects this is the recreation tax, so the $100 per property.
So you say there's money left in that fund?
Yeah, 2025, we're sitting at about $60,000 with a few ins and outs still to to be played around with that in the next couple of weeks.
Bo?
I'm just curious whether there was more than one estimate for this particular project, the insulation of the ceilings.
My understanding is that there was. They've only provided this one to Laxan now. So there's two attachments. One is the installation and one is the material.
Okay. When this hall gets rented out, where does, if it does get rented out, like he said, it was starting to gain momentum, does that revenue go back to Laxan and County then?
No, they're their own society. So they they own and operate the hall. So any revenues they collect go back to the their society. I will add there's, I should have pulled the number, but approximately 20 community halls in rural Laxan.
And we give each one $2,000.
The, yes, so currently that's what we have. So any county bank, let me just double check this one. Any hall within Laxan County gets 2,000 and the halls within the other municipalities. So for example, the Diamond Center in Marithorpe or the one in Alberta Beach, they get 1,500. We reduce it a bit because they do have other municipalities that contribute.
Thank you.
And that funding level will come back to council. That's always a council discussion.
Yeah.
When we do the tax bylaw.
So what's the wish of council? Are there any other requests coming in before the end of the year for that?
They typically come in right to December 31st as people are looking at their books for year end and finding out they're a little bit low on.
It's going to be a little late because we don't have a meeting.
Yeah. We have funded retroactively if they can show that the.
Out of the out of the 25 budget.
Yeah, absolutely. So the options I've put in front of you are that we fund the the full amount, which would be in addition to the $6,200 that has already been allocated. That we fund just the purchase of the materials and that they would find volunteer labor or something to install. The problem that comes with that is, do they have any volunteers that are knowledgeable in the installation? And making sure that they have the proper PPE and all that kind of stuff to do it. Option three is that we allow a change of scope to the original project for the window replacement. The motion is specific to the window replacement. So we could change the scope so that they could use the already funded $6,200 on whichever aspect they feel is most necessary and most urgent. And then option four is that unfortunately, we're not able to provide funding.
All right. What's your wish, council?
I'd opt for option three. The money's already been funded, previously put aside for windows. They've already got their windows, use it for insulation instead. That's they choose.
All right, that's been moved. Okay, Trista?
Trista always has something to say. Just for clarification, they haven't purchased the windows yet. They just have, we just funded it.
Well, I agree with Barry on option three. And I would also like to see more than one estimate provided in the future. If they decide to pursue this further, we should have at least three estimates provided to us.
So just a question on that. When, you know, it's a society that's autonomous, do we want to do their management for? Is my question, because if we start going into the the fine letter and we should, we should give them some, you know, allow them their authority and trust that they they bring the the right thing forward. And because I I don't, I don't think it's our council's job to to start deciding who who they're hiring. We can decide on how much we give them, but I'm I'm not sure I agree with you here.
Well, option, you can go with option two, you just pay for the materials and they can deal with the installation itself. It's putting installation. It's not that complicated.
Yeah. Well, it's the same thing in terms.
No, like I said, you can go with their 4,500 and change for the materials.
Yeah.
Let them do it themselves and probably that's their deal.
Yep, it's okay. Dale?
So taking that one step further, what what I believe councillor Conish is talking about is that anytime we give out money, we need to be certain that it's valued.
Oh, absolutely.
And and his suggestion of asking them to at least get three quotes, I think is very relevant because if we just get one quote, we, and we give them the money, can we go out to the rate payers and say that we've given that money knowing full well that it's been the best deal? Because we're giving the rate payers money out. So I would say the same process that if we do a tender, same process should be here. If they, if there's question, there's no reason that we shouldn't be able to go back and say, hey, did you quote? And if they said yes, and they get back to us, that means we substantiated that for our rate payers. I guess, yeah, what you could do is make it first then. Okay, one thing we could do is make it a policy, if you're going to apply for a grant such as this, submit three quotes, then it's right in front of us. We look at it and they teaches them how to run a better community hall or whatever you want to call it too. It's not that much more work. Just makes them accountable.
Council, I'm okay with it. I'm not sure I agree, but that's all right. I can live with that. That's I'm not necessarily looking for more more work and to that. So but I understand the argument.
So for this particular one, we need to decide for this one. And then we also need to put something in place for future.
So we've got a motion on the floor for option three. Any further discussion on that? I've heard option three or possibly two, but if we'll vote on three then if it's staying on the floor. So all those in favor of option three? Opposed? It's carried. All right, option three.
I have a question for Trista.
You have?
For Trista.
Okay, go ahead.
So Trista, is there an actual policy?
There is. I'll share it out with council. It doesn't talk to the number of quotes, but.
Thank you. That's another one to put on the list, I guess.
If if we would have went with option two, like going future, like where we give money, but then they do the work themselves, is that, is there any liability for the county in that regard? If we kind of just hold?
No, no, there would be their requirements as the employer, the host of the volunteers, they would be responsible.
Right. I think, and I don't know, it might be a discussion in our in our policy where we don't necessarily pay the whole thing on on stuff like this, but we just round off the number and and say, we will put $2,000 towards your project if you do go ahead with a project.
Yeah, that's an option. Quite often, we will hold the money in trust until the project is complete and they submit final reporting. And sometimes we'll just release it upfront if they require the funding.
And I'm a firm believer that these, I like those community halls, but I think they have to do their work too. And they can't be, always expect that we've got a project that the county is going to pay the whole thing. And but to give give some money, certainly. But but I would, I would give a lesser amount and you guys see how you find the rest of the money. Yeah, absolutely. It's, I know it's tough for small halls. I get it. But I don't think we need to 100% fund these small halls. So when whenever they come up with a good idea.
Little like they kind of went ahead with the rentals and I think they should have insulated it before. Flooring in.
And they didn't get their grant. So now we're supposed to cover it. So just, just my thought for future considerations. All right, Heatherdown Cemetery. Trista, is that yours?
Okay, so this item was presented at, I believe it was the November 13th council meeting. Yep. And we had received a request from the Zion United Church to formally take title of the Heatherdown Cemetery. The Zion Church has provided notification that their congregation, the church is voted disbanded. So they will no longer be a church group. So they have asked that we take over the cemetery. And when we presented it at November 13th, there were still some additional questions that we needed some answers to. So I've provided the answers to those now. The biggest one was, does the county have to take over if we're requested to buy a cemetery or buy a church? The Cemeteries Act will only allow certain groups to own and own cemeteries, municipalities being one of them. We do not have to enter into, or we not have to approve the transfer. We can say no. What would typically happen then though is that the cemetery would close and would not be available for any new burials. So that is an option that we can not or not entertain this. The other questions that came out were, is there a viable organization that will continue to operate and maintain the cemetery? The answer is yes, they have a Heatherdown Cemetery Foundation that would continue to do that. They're doing it now and they would continue in the future. Is there a perpetual care fund? There is. I don't know what the amount of that is, but that is a requirement through the Cemeteries Act again, that they have that. And that's to take care of the cemetery in those events where there is nobody else maintaining. Will there be additional costs or or maintenance requirements of the county for assuming title? The answer at this point is no, as long as this volunteer group is still around to continue with those services. There is that caveat that should the that organization dissolve, then that would become the county's responsibility. With that, we do own two cemeteries that are open and do provide the maintenance and operations of that. There is some grass mowing and maintenance that way, but there's not a lot of costs to the county for that outside of the mowing. And it unfortunately, a cemetery actually does raise some revenues with the sale of plots. The other question that we had was around the title. So currently, the title is a little bit awkward. It actually lists eight individuals that are parishioners of the church and not the church itself, which I found a little bit odd, but they've told me that that is not actually that odd. Changing the title requires the parishioners consent, which would go to the regional council after that. The issue we have right now is that with the church closing, the the minister at the church, once he is done, which is in the next week or two, the the group cannot contact that minister for the next year. So we're kind of on a timeline crunch because they can't approve this parishioners consent without the minister. And then the other question that I had that came to me fairly late was have they actually reached out to the regional council of the United Church to take on the operations or take over the title? I haven't got that answer back, but historically, what that means is less local involvement. And so many of the local churches, when they give up a cemetery, will, that's not their first option. Just because they lose that local touch to it. So it is back here for consideration, whether or not we want to assume that title and proceed with with that.
All right, questions? Bo?
I'm just a little confused here. Are we purchasing this parcel?
No, it's given.
The consideration is 9,000 then.
I think that was a different issue. That was a different issue.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I was confused at first too.
Sorry, that one's for a closed session later today. The one in front of you, the paper.
Dale? So have we checked the title? Is the church itself on the title as well?
No, the church, or the church, the title only lists the eight individuals.
On?
Of which, I believe six of them aren't no longer with us.
Yeah.
And they're still on title.
Wow. And that's why I asked the question because I, I, you know, fairly familiar with that area and I know that some of those people that likely are on that title are since passed. Um, so, and then my question again was, was the church on that particular title or is it just specified? So the church is on the title as well?
No, the church is not, it's just the individuals. And that's why they require that parishioner's consent is my understanding because not all of those eight people are still able to, um, authorize the title transfer.
So does that go to their executors?
Yeah, so that, to the individuals executors? No, uh, my understanding is it through agreement or something, it re- it goes back to the church. And so that's why
Oh.
they need that parishioner's consent.
Oh my God. Barry?
Looks like to me we're going to end up with this church regardless.
Well, it's not a church, it's a cemetery.
Cemetery regardless, because they're going to run out of money eventually anyhow. I would say let it run for another year with their funds that they have left and then see where we end up after that. Right? They, they have a fund right now, they have their down foundation or whatever has a fund to take care of the maintenance right now. And keep the cemetery operational. And then see where they're in a year. I'm sure we'll hear back from them saying we're out of money now, now you guys have to take it.
Trista?
Well, they can't talk to the priest for another year anyhow if we don't make a decision next two weeks.
Unless you, uh, talk to him this week.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, so that, I, I think we're on the same page. I'm not sure if we're agreeing or disagreeing. But, um, that's my recommendation is that we enter into an agreement with this group to continue maintaining. Uh, most of that is done by volunteers, um, so there's no labor costs. Um, and that we proceed with taking title to the cemetery.
I, I think that makes, makes sense. So does someone want to make a motion? Dale?
Option one.
Option one, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. All right. And so, wh- where's that other one about the church? Oh, that's in closed session, okay. I was wondering, I couldn't. Yeah. What's that? Oh, it's the same church?
It's the same church.
Oh.
No.
Well, that one doesn't have a cemetery.
Correct.
The other one's just the church. Yeah, okay. So why is that one in closed session?
Just so we can talk about the money.
Okay.
So that, we can get into it in closed session, but that property, um, the county owns the land, the church owns the building. And so with the closure of their congregation, um, they're looking to sell off the, the building. The county has no purpose for the land or the building. And so previous council recommended that we proceed with selling it. However, because there's an agreement that hasn't been signed to that effect yet, I'm bringing it back to council for consideration and just to make sure that you're aware. And then to determine what that actual listing price will be.
Okay, so I'm, I'm not totally clear why that can't be done in public session.
Only because there's an appraisal report and so we can come directly out and discuss what we're going to list it for. But because the appraisal report is there, it goes into closed session for that initial discussion, um, and then.
All right. Okay, fair enough. Okay, uh, let's move on then to, uh, C, uh, nine C one, community or county calendar. Nice pictures on it, by the way. Oh, we get to take one home? Oh, they're named, names on? If you have ten friends, you can give it, give me it fun. All right, Twilight, thank you.
Good morning, Raven Council. You have before you our twenty twenty-six county calendar. Um, so this is produced, um, in-house, uh, printed, of course, um, as local as we can go. Um, what you see here is a great opportunity to showcase local, uh, photography, local interests. Um, we create a theme each year. Um, this is our thirteenth, uh, calendar competition. We do a, it starts with a photo competition in the fall. And we have lots of locals and amateurs and over, over a hundred entries this year. We pared it down to sixty that were then, uh, posted on our website, lsac.ca forward slash photo dash contest. Where the public could vote. Yeah, it's, it's the shortcut. Um, so where our public could vote for the top entries, which then made it into this calendar. Um, along with each submission, um, the, the, the submitter has to tell us a little bit about the photo, what it meant to them, where they took it. Why they took it, why they're submitting it, which helps us build a story of community that we then share on social media. We share, um, in, in the calendar, of course, and anywhere we can in some of our print productions. So it's really an opportunity to showcase community, to showcase, um, you know, places, uh, pride of place. And, um, it gives us the opportunity to take those photos and use them across the board in lots of our, uh, print productions and, uh, the website, et cetera. So, um, we, we do this within, so we have, um, seven hundred printed copies that go out to the winners and to, um, community areas, um, as out, was outlined in the, um, uh, in what you see before you on the board, um, in the submission there. And so this is just the way to, um, share it with you and let you know that, uh, this is our thirteenth annual. Um, and the calendar that goes with it.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, any comments?
Nice job.
I.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's a beautiful calendar. I, I love the pictures every year and, uh, they seem to be getting better every year too. So it's, uh, it's really nice to see.
I absolutely, lootly agree. And I think this year's theme being, uh, Community Spotlight really, um, brought out some great images from across the county. And yeah, I'm, I'm proud to live here and share this with everyone. So you each have five to share out as well. If you're needing more, let me know. I've.
We only need five friends.
Barry's got some to share.
Well, thank you. Uh, just thank you very much for that. I think it's wonderful. Yeah. So, uh, motion to accept that, uh, for information. Dale, all in favor? Carried. All right, so next, uh, rescheduling January first twenty-sixth. Nobody wants to come January first?
I certainly do not. Uh, so the next governance and priorities meeting is rescheduled, uh, for the first Thursday, which is January first. So we're looking to either reschedule or cancel that meeting. Um, we do have a lot of information still coming back and forth to council. And so my recommendation is to reschedule and not cancel, but we need to find another date. So the, um, municipal planning and commission meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, January seventh. That will typically end fairly early in the day, so we could follow that with a governance and priorities meeting.
Okay, what's your wish, counsel?
I'd be game for that option. Move it to the seventh.
To January?
Seventh afternoon.
January seventh. That motion's been made. All in favor? Carried. There we go.
You'll send us a email on that so we can schedule it in our calendars?
Yeah, to the calendar. Yeah. All right, uh, and A two, Trista?
Uh, so at the organizational meeting on October thirtieth, we kind of went in circles with the ICF and the IDP committees. Um, landing on, let's just appoint members when we get to that point. Um, we have had a couple of requests to start some ICF discussions. Uh, and so I'm bringing it back so that we can get those, uh, names in place. And then we can share the applicable information with, um, all of council. But focus in on, um, the committee members. Uh, and so we do have ICFs with all of the municipalities inside of our borders and all of the municipalities that touch the outside of our borders. At this point, I'm just looking for the main, um, municipalities within the borders. So, uh, the two towns and the village, um, as well as for the IDP. Now, these aren't regularly scheduled meetings. They are kind of an ad hoc as needed, um, for the IDP. The ICF can be pre-scheduled if we are going down, you know, a fairly quick renegotiation of those. Uh, so I am recommending, um, one of the discussions, along with delaying appointments, was to amalgamate those two committees. I am recommending that we don't amalgamate, uh, just because although there's some crossover in some of the discussions that would be at both of those. There, they are different. Um, and what we can do administratively is if, for example, we put the same people on the ICF as the IDP. We can try to schedule those on the same days, um, because it'll be the same on the other end as well, the other municipality. Uh, so historically, we have done the, uh, local counselors from that area. So for Marithorpe, um, division six and seven, um, Alberta Beach, div five and somebody extra. And then Onaway div one and two.
Dale?
So with respect to what I envision of, of breaking the wall down between east and west. Um, I'm going to make a suggestion to council that the, the west counselors go to the east side. The east side go there. No, you don't want that?
No.
You're going to be off my friends list. I'm just saying, no calendar for you.
Okay.
That didn't fly.
I, I don't think that flew. Uh, yeah, just.
Trista? I, I can appreciate that, but I think that, um, when we're negotiating those agreements, uh, recreation is key uh, in a lot of those. And so when you look at, uh, the ICF with the town of Marithorpe, it's the division six and seven ratepayers that would typically access those services. Same with Onaway, Alberta Beach.
Thank you. Okay, Bo, motion? I thought you were going to make a motion. You're joking. All right, uh, would someone make a motion, please?
Are we putting names in there as well?
Well, that is part of the motion, yeah. Well, let's say which option, what's the difference on the? I couldn't really figure out the difference on those, uh, two motions, uh, one and two, when I read it last night, but.
Sorry, option one is just the towns and village. Option two includes appointments for the summer villages and the counties as well. I don't think we're needing that at this point.
We want to option one. So can I just, uh, uh, for time things? So town of Onaway would be one and two. Okay, so Bo and Mike? Uh, Barry? Ah, what a, you look so much alike. Like twins, right? All right, Alberta Beach, uh, Bo and Dale? And Marithorpe, Jill and myself. Oh, sorry, Ed doesn't get one. Yeah, he'd have to make Chair Hill, uh, uh, a village.
I would suggest, um, I think with the town of Marithorpe, historically, we had three.
Okay.
We did actually, so we could put Ed on that one.
Put Ed on that, sure. Yeah, we do, we don't want him to have one less meeting. Or do you guys want, uh, want him in Alberta Beach?
A few, I'll take Alberta Beach.
Well, you're both on it. Do you want a third one there? He's nearly closer to that.
Ed, Ed has made a comment to me that he has to be careful with, uh, extra meetings with work.
Yeah.
So I think maybe what I'd suggest is.
He wouldn't be upset.
Probably. As Deputy Reeve, maybe I'll go over there.
Well, you're on it already.
Oh, yeah.
That's the same one, sorry. Unless you want to be on twice.
No, no. Oh, you don't want to put three on Alberta Beach? I understood it three on Marithorpe.
No, no. Well, yeah, the, the question is, do we put, if we want to put Ed on one of them, do we want to put him on Marithorpe or on Alberta Beach? So, uh, you know what, we can ask him, right? May- maybe he's happy not to have another appointment.
If you want to cover it off on today's meeting, we could put him as an alternate for all of them.
Oh, wonder.
And then he can go wherever, whenever.
You're so wise. Okay, so if, uh, we'll put that, uh, on that, uh, adds an alternate on all. Excellent. All right, any discussion on that? All in favor? Carried. What's that? Uh, oh, I had made it, but I, uh, Jill, did you make that motion? What's that? I know. You didn't get my hint.
Yes, I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you. All right, so Jill made the motion. All those in favor? Try it again. Carried. All right, uh, appointments, uh, same town emergency response center.
Okay, firstly, my apologies, I did not catch this at the, um, organizational meeting. So we have appointed through that, um, we had appointed Counselor Voltner and Deputy Reeve Johnson to the ERC committee. The ERC is the Marithorpe, uh, Fire Hall. Counselor Gifford and Counselor Stoney are appointed to the West End Bus. Those meetings typically happen back to back. And so it kind of makes logistically sense to change the appointments for that to Counselor Gifford and Counselor Stoney from Voltner and Johnson.
So are you okay with that, Dale? You were on that?
I'll make a motion for option one.
All right, a motion, any discussion on it? All those in favor? Carried. Yeah, that's what happens. Jill wasn't on enough committees, so. Uh, all right, uh, policy council remuneration.
So this has gone round and round a couple of times. I think I've collected all of the amendments we want to see. It is in front of you. It has not changed from the version that I emailed out. Um, and so it is here for approval.
All right, I'm sure you had a chance to read through it. Are the, is there any, uh, uh, discussions on that? What's that? Yeah, okay, would someone like to make a motion? Uh, Mike makes a motion for option one. Okay, any discussion? Jill?
I think I just found a, just reading it, um, each member of council shall contribute nine percent. That should be may, because we changed that to optional. Uh, number nine. Yeah, that should, should have been changed because we talked about that.
Oh.
Oh, am I looking at set miles?
So it's under eight A, I think.
Uh, it's the second, uh, the second document, not the first one.
Yeah, the second document. Yeah, the second document.
Oh, but that's, that's the last.
Okay.
But then it moves over to eight B if you want to opt it.
Got it.
That's the old one.
Okay.
Okay, good. All right.
Apologies, I just put the old one on for comparison.
Yeah, that's, that's okay. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? That's carried. All right, so we're off to closed session. Hey, how do you like this? Speed we got that done? So someone make a motion to go into closed session. Barry, moves we move into closed session? Is anyone online? Yep, there's people back, so welcome back. We're just went back, how do you say, back out of in camera. So we do have a motion coming up from our discussions. Dale, you have a motion for us?
I'll make a motion that county council advises Zion Church the value to purchase a proposed three plus or minus parcel from Lot five, Block Plan, Plan eight oh two oh six two two. Paradise Estates was in the northwest, oh seven fifty-four dash oh three, west of the fifth, fifteen three five two one Township Road five forty-two. Tax roll five four zero three zero seven, three zero three seven, would be four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And that the county enter into an agreement with the Zion Church to have a fifty fifty split on the net proceeds of the sale.
Thank you very much. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. And with that, I got to go back to our. We have no more items on, oh, we do. Carla?
Yeah, I just want to provide a partial update to a request in regards to the fire engine purchases. So if I can go ahead with that information. So, right now, the situation type one, engine type one, the design is underway. We are still going to check and see if there'd be a penalty on that if we cancel. So they've already started to type the type one engine. Type three has not been purchased. The RFP is still in negotiation. So there'd be no, no cost exposure or anything to the county on that side. I will advise council as well too, we did do a borrowing bylaw earlier in twenty twenty-five. I have already done a draw for one million dollars on that because we knew we were going to be doing deposits and everything on for the fire trucks. So the total debenture for is one point eight million dollars. I did a draw for one million.
Okay, so that million is sitting in an account right now?
That's correct. And no need interest, so.
Okay. Yeah, let us know on the type ones. That's the one that's more expensive one, right? That was the one point one or one point two?
Yeah, we end up gaining a lot less, like it was one point, one was the budget, but we end up gaining it for about eight hundred, I think, just a, it'll be about nine hundred thousand dollars. So we did get a lot less.
Isn't type one supposed to be ready in twenty-two to twenty-three months?
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think they started it that hard. I think they bought the frame. Okay, can you post another, please?
Okay, yeah, just want to advise you.
Okay, any further questions? Okay. Good. Any other items? If not, oh, Trista?
We should accept that update for information, please.
Okay, a motion to, good, Barry, all in favor? Carrie. All right, with that, we will adjourn our meeting and the next meeting will be, what is that, January something or another?
Sorry, January seventh for the governance and priorities, January eighth for regular council.
There we go.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Yes, January, oh, they're done already. They're gone. I was going to say that too. The girls are fast. All right, thank you very much.